Good morning, good afternoon and good evening wherever you are. Also, if you celebrate a very happy Easter, I completely forgot that that holiday was occurring right around now and made some silly mistakes yesterday driving around trying to do things. So if you celebrate Easter, I hope you enjoy. We are here to talk about the ACP 420. My continual apologies if and when I get that number mixed up. I'm also doing the ACA 900 on Fridays. And just finished up the ACA 920. So all the numbers are starting to blur in my mind. We are here to talk about JIRA Service Management. From the point of view from a admin. So this is not for end users. This is for the professional track, as Atlassian calls it. We've got folks here from Armenia. Welcome, Susanna. Justin exists in the ether, Roto, Lake Forest. Glad you're here. Martin, Havana and Deepu Samir. I don't know if I'm saying that right. Welcome. Glad you all are here. All right, as usual, we'll start out with a couple of slides and then we're just going to jump into. You know, our live learning and get hands on. I have a bit more experience with the reporting side of JIRA. So this will be, this section when I went through it was a bit easier. There weren't too many things that jumped out that I was more, that I was unfamiliar with compared to things like, say workflows or schemes that were some kind of black magic to me. Where is my little filter talking head? And why are you not working? Oh, I know why I'm hiding. There we go. All right, here from Indy. Indiana Jones? Kari, welcome. Good to see you. I'll back up one. So I'm at the starting point. So my name is Rob. Most of you have probably been in one of these with me. If you haven't, absolutely no worries. I have worked in IT my entire career. I started out as the IT help desk student worker and then I'm now a systems manager. So I've worked with most of the internal teams at different organizations. And I started using JIRA about 10 years ago and really got into JIRA Service Management. Now it would have been six years, I think. Where I was supporting an international HR team. They had over 100,000 tickets a year. 25 dedicated agents at tier one and then like 40 agents at tier two. And that was my introduction to JSM, JIRA Service Management. I got very lucky. And you'll hear me talk about different ways to learn. We had a, we were on data center and we had an internal JIRA team and I got to know them and one of the people on that team was very nice and taught me a lot of stuff. And that's, that was my introduction. So I learned by doing, but I had a coach, a teacher that helped me out. I also don't have a lot of spare time, so I'm doing these study sessions live. So I get to learn, but also other people also get to learn. Interaction, please use the chat if you're comfortable, ask questions in there, but also communicate with other people in the chat. There are a lot of folks in here and I'll. Some of the names that have already been chatting, you know, Chad, Justin, Susan, Rebecca, et cetera, Kari have experience in JIRA. So please share that if you're comfortable and if you aren't in the chat yet, I'll encourage you to jump in. It makes it a lot more interesting when we all share our experience. Also, if you notice I say anything incorrect, or if you're like, I don't understand, please call me out on it. I'm also here to learn. This is not just about Rob telling you what it is. This is about us all becoming better together. Also, if you haven't, please subscribe. That helps me out and like the stream. That helps other people find it. You can hit those buttons down at the bottom. And this recording will also be available after this. So if you have to leave in the middle for any reason, or if you want to review it, of course you can. And there's an entire playlist that I'll talk about later of all of our study sessions. As I mentioned, we're going to talk about reporting dashboards and JQL. I call it JQL. So if you hear me use the term JQL, that is what JQL is to me. For me, it's the same as saying SQL. If you know what SQL is, Structured Query Language. I figured, why don't we just call it JQL? It does sound like some kind of nighttime medicine though, as someone pointed out. Resources, Atlassian, this QR code goes to Atlassian's official page. And that has been updated drastically. They have a new LMS that they built themselves, which I think is pretty cool. That was launched just before Team, so about two weeks ago. And they have also completely revamped this exam. I'm happy and slash terrified to share. I'll be sitting the exam in mid-May. So I'm on a timeline now. And I'll talk a bit about my thoughts and terror feelings about that as we get to the end, how we approach taking the exam and approach setting ourselves up for success. But these recordings are here for you. Excuse me, there's something in my eye. You will need to get hands on. This is not something I would recommend just studying and hoping for. Please get a test instance at work. If your organization uses it. Use your work instance. That'll be the best because it'll have the most information. And I have one more voucher to give away. I'll probably give it away next week. You have to take the exam though by June 1st. So this is a free exam. Otherwise it's $250. So if you get it for free, that's awesome. If you work in an organization, many times they will pay certification fees. So if you want to take the exam and you don't want to pay $250. Go to your organization and see if they have a budget for this kind of thing. Justin always thinks of JQL and yes. Key and Peele is a, was a comedy show in the States and they, they riffed on names in one of the episodes. I do need your help though. I gotta figure out which one of these things I want to do next and I very quickly need to go grab this link. I've put together a very quick Google form. So if you have a minute and I'll keep this up for a pretty long time. I'm curious which one of these exams you think I should do next. And there's going to be three to choose from and I'll quickly just show you all what this looks like. We've got the JIRA Administration for Cloud. We've got the Atlassian Cloud Org Admin and then Managing JIRA Projects for Cloud. Susanna, my timeline. Yes, I will talk about it. If I don't start talking about it at about 10 of. Please keep me honest, Susanna. I'll do my best to remember, but I might get caught up in whatever we're talking about and I want to make sure I get to that for you. Sarah, welcome. So please take a minute to just let me know your thoughts on which one of these three. I'm not including data center because I don't have access to it, but I've also heard they're starting to shift those exams out. So instead I'll focus on our three cloud, three flavors of cloud that I know will hopefully stick around for a while. Otherwise, that was the last slide I've got. Where did, oh, did I pull it over here? I stole it. I need to put it back. Here we go. Alright, so we are talking about reporting and dashboards. I guess a quick question. Frustrating. Do you find reporting in JIRA Service Management frustrating and why? Awesome. Chat, if you could fill out that Google form, I'll write that down. I'm trying to get it all in one spot. I will also have a LinkedIn poll out there. I'm just trying to get as much feedback. When I first learned reporting in JIRA, I found it insanely frustrating and it was because I didn't understand some underlying things. So before we jump into JIRA or into the training. I'm just going to give you my own thoughts on. How some of the more advanced reporting works. Now for the exam, we're, we're going to need to know about both the built-in reports. So there's a report button. Right here on the left. We'll need to know about these reports. And we'll also need to know a bit about dashboards. And then JQL. Okay, gotcha Chad. So when I hear reporting in JIRA, I tend to think dashboards and search, not the built-in reports. And that is because when I learned how to use the system, I first was thrown into JQL. So I started in the deep end. I don't know why. But I started trying to find tickets using JQL. So for me, when I hear reporting, this is what I think of. And this is a tool that I use on a very regular basis, probably daily to help teams find things. Now I have an entire Udemy course just training people on how to search and find using JQL. I'll put a link in the chat. I don't know how much JQL will show up on the exam, but I've heard they've removed some of it. It used to be a lot more JQL intensive. I'll pull up the breakdown, Kari, in just a moment. Wow, when we pop back over to Atlassian Learning. But I put together an entire hour plus course just on JQL because I found it so useful. The concept that really helped me understand JQL and the basic search was to think of it like a spreadsheet. When I come in here and use this basic search and I change, I only want to see tickets in a certain project. It's just like filtering a column on a spreadsheet. And to oversimplify systems like JIRA, that's all this is. It's a big spreadsheet. That has lots of columns and I'm using this filtering feature to say, only give me tickets. In certain projects, the same thing I would do in a spreadsheet if I added a filter to a column and that column was called project. So keeping that concept in mind, that helped me understand what's happening when I use this type of search. Or when I do something like use JQL. And so this for me is something I can now read very easily, but it took me a while to get there. So if you're learning JQL, definitely go get hands on, but just remember. All you're doing is filtering a gigantic spreadsheet and that helped me understand everything that's going on in here. Now for JQL, if you understand other query languages like SQL. Some of the concepts apply, but they're different enough. That there's not too many similarities, but it can be helpful if you have other knowledge of things like that. We had a question on the exam breakdown. Let me go pull that open real quick. So this is the top level of Atlassian Learning. I'm just going to go down to certifications and look for JIRA Service Projects. And I'll drop this in the chat for you there, Kari. Under exam details, they have the breakdown. Now, reporting takes on a whole 7%. Of the entire exam. So if we think back to learning automations, automations are slightly more important. Or if we think back to knowledge bases, only 5%. I'll take time at the end to talk about how I break down studying, but just keep in mind, if you don't fully grasp all the reporting stuff. Not the end of the world because it is a relatively small amount of the exam. I'm not saying don't study it. But if you're getting closer to your exam date and you have to choose something to work on, pick the meteor items, the customer facing features or distinguishing among permissions. Or agent facing features. That said, in my day-to-day life, reporting is fairly common. So in terms of what I do in my job or when I work with users, reporting to show up a lot and using JQL to manipulate tickets. Popping back over to the, the training though. Alright, a visual representation, ah, representation of data. Now the reports are, they come with JIRA and so they look pretty. In my mind, the reports are better built out than the dashboards, which we'll talk about. And of course, reporting lets you figure out what's going on. I haven't used the out of the box reports too much and that's my own challenge, my own. I'll say problem because I started using JQL on the search so much. But we need to understand the importance of reports. They let the team know how they're doing. They let us know what customers think of us through satisfaction and they also help us uncover bottlenecks or problems we might have, you know, with our process. So reports in general are something we should be reviewing on a regular basis. Now an important call out, agents cannot edit or configure reports. And again, reports. Are specifically the things that show up under the report tab. So if I go to a project. When they mention reports, they mean everything under this tab right here. Reports are not dashboards. Reports are not filters. So agents can view these reports, but they are unable to configure or edit or modify them. And then customers and collaborators can't see them at all. So your customers, unless they also happen to be an agent, won't be able to view reports. That kind of makes sense because they're the customer. They don't need to see the internal workings of the team. You can, of course, take a screenshot and send it to them if you need to share it. They have this interesting. The terminology here kind of bugs me. There's default reports and custom reports. Most of the custom reports seem like they're just still out of the box, but we've got a number of default reports that just come with the system. Now workload, satisfaction, deflection and resolved. And these. Like anything with a system like this, I assume Atlassian put these in here because in their research and in their experience, most teamed, most of the time will find them useful. You know, Justin, you had to go and complicate things, didn't you? Yes, filters can feed reports. But when I'm going through this studying and I'm thinking about the exam. I wouldn't go into filters to go look up a report or the things I know about filters wouldn't necessarily tie into reports. And as Justin noticed, there are some limitations with the reporting. And this is what I tend to run into. Someone will ask me to build a certain kind of report. And I go in and I just can't find a way to do it with the reports functionality. But there are a number of default reports. For the purpose of the exam, I'd recommend being aware of what these are. You don't have to memorize them, but just know what they do in general. Okay, workload is the tickets assigned to each agent and if they're breaching their SLA. Satisfaction is the average rating for the team. Deflection are the number of times the knowledge base articles helped. Deflection again is when someone doesn't have to put in a ticket because they got help either self-service or they were able to find the answer on their own. And request resolved, every issue resolved with or without knowledge base. So going back into JIRA real quick, I can see a lot of these. A whole bunch of reports. Now they aren't. Am I just in the wrong spot? They aren't organized by, you know, default and custom. They're just all in here. Oh, I'm in a software project. Maybe that's why. Hang on. There we go. That looks better. Software projects have their own bucket of reports as we saw. But over here on the left, I've got my workload report. My satisfaction report. Deflection and resolved. This test instance doesn't have a lot of activity and this is where if your organization uses JIRA Service Management. If you can go in and take a look at these reports in there, you're going to see a lot more. It looks like there's a brand new report at lasting analytics, which is taking me to another tab. Okay. Well, that one isn't mentioned on the exam, so pretend that doesn't exist right now. Now within these reports, we do have options to change the timeframe. So some of these default reports will give us a little bit of flexibility. For example, I can search for them here. But they show up right at the top and they're easy to find. These are things I also practically just tell my agents about. Like, hey, there are reports I expect you to go look at. Keep an eye on them for me. Custom reports are things we can create and modify. This is where I tend to spend more time as an admin in reports. A team lead will come to me and say, hey, I need help finding something or I need help understanding certain parts of JIRA. I would come into a custom report and just see what I have. For me, the, this is more. This falls more into the bucket of just understanding what tools I have, just knowing that I have, for example, a created versus resolved chart. And some of these reports, if you're familiar with dashboards, also show up as gadgets. So we'll talk about gadgets when we get to dashboards, but some of these things show up in a couple of spots. For the exam, I don't think we need to. For example, memorize the SLA met versus breached. We just need to be aware that it exists and kind of a rough idea of what it does. But again, practically for my job, we really need to understand that there are custom reports and here's a list of them and that they can help us do certain things. Honestly, when I'm asked about reports, I'll do exactly what I just did. I'll open up JIRA. And I'll just start clicking around and looking at reports and seeing, hey, this kind of is what I want. Does this help you? You know, Mr. Mrs. Leader. Oh, that's all about reports. Again, this is 7% of the exam, so they're going through it. To make a new custom report, you just click on new report. Give it some kind of name. And then add in series. So you're adding in information you need. Again, this isn't covered in the official training, which I find kind of interesting that they wouldn't want us to know how to make these. It is very straightforward though. And down here at the bottom is what Justin was mentioning, filters or searching for tickets. Let us restrict what shows up in the report. Again, I'm telling JIRA exclude things that don't meet this criteria. So I only want to see things in JQL, JSM. Throw away all the other tickets. This again though, is where I spend a lot of time tinkering and playing around and finding the limitations. So definitely worth getting hands on. Especially if your organization uses it because there'll be data. Any questions on reports? Good luck getting anything more than 365 days ago. I get like, that's an interesting comment, Justin. It kind of makes sense to me that there's that limit. When I think of most of Atlassian's products, or at least the ones we usually think about JIRA in Confluence, they're a little bit more tactical in my mind. They're about doing the work, you know, thinking, planning throughout up to a year and doing that. Whereas if I need a longer look at something over multiple years, in my mind, that JIRA is not the right tool for that. In my mind, that would have to be something else I need to go to. However, it's frustrating. I can't get that in JIRA. And to your point, you know, there are add-ons that do it. I've used, I think EZBI in the past. But that is one limitation where we run into a year of data and no more. Oh, excuse me. Okay. Dashboards. Dashboards are the, what I tend to build when someone says, Rob, I need a report. And that might just be my bad habit. But we find these in JIRA and we can populate them with what they call gadgets. Gadgets are just little, well, I'll just read it off the screen, configurable blocks. Now we can create and we can add and configure these little gadgets. Add-ons that you have may give you more gadgets. So if you change companies, you may have more or less options that pop up. So just be aware, if you change companies, what you see and have access to will differ. That was something that drove me crazy because I didn't realize that. Different users can see different information. This is something worth probably writing down for your study notes, but also just you need to know. Dashboards and pretty much everything else. Are scoped to your permissions. So if I give you a report and you don't have access to some of those tickets, you'll get a different number than I do. This can cause a lot of problems, especially with senior stakeholders. They may not have access to all the projects, so they'll be missing stuff. Justin, why would I ever want to compare metrics year over year? That sounds like a lot of work. I don't necessarily disagree, my friend. I'm just trying to understand like why it is the way it is. Things reports are okay. Atlassian needs to put duplicate features for the series. Oh, interesting. Actually, while I'm here, I'll just drop in another question. Have, have any of you out there used dashboards? And if so, what is the use case or what did you use them to help you do? There are a couple of gadgets that I use a lot and then Atlassian calls out, there's an assigned to me gadget and this just shows you what's assigned to you. So sometimes I put this on dashboards just so folks always see their tickets. Work item statistics is one I use very frequently. In this example, it's just breaking down all the tickets that meet some criteria by status. So I've used this one frequently for status or for assignee to get an idea of how many tickets are assigned to each person or meet some criteria. And then similarly, I've got two dimensional filter, ah, two dimension. Two dimensional filter statistics. There we go. So in this example, status by work item type to give you a better idea of what's in there. Now we'll build some of these, but these are all links. So you can click on this 17 that would show you the 17 stories that are in to do. So they add a little bit of interactivity. Follow project updates mainly. Communicate to team members, monitor tickets based on status, assignee organization. Usually they're all the two dimensional gadget. Yes, that one is very popular. SLA stats for teams. That's a good one. Number of tickets by status. A lot of the examples I'm seeing relate to. Yeah, like team performance. How is the team doing? So when the team comes in, they can quickly see what's going on. And that is a great use case for these and it's one that's, I think that one of the more common. Alright, we'll do all this live. Oh, well, there we go. Because most of the time it's a team leader or a team member coming to me saying, hey, Rob, I need help with this. So to add a dashboard, we just go up to dashboards and create dashboard. I'll have to give it some kind of name. JQL test. I don't know if this will be on the exam, but dashboards have permissions. So you can restrict who can view it. And because the permissions also in like. I kind of understand why this is here. It's just one other layer, but if you don't have access to the work items, you can't see the dashboard. So I typically just say an entire project can see it or an entire organization. So I typically just let everyone see my dashboards. I might restrict editing and only let a small project or a small group of people edit them. So no one messes it up. Yeah, I don't want that. Yep, thank you. Go away. This is a blank dashboard. Um, one thing you can do is star them. Please star them. Over time, you're gonna end up with hundreds of these things. And starring it just makes the ones that you use frequently easier to find. Uh, but on the right, we have the gadgets. Uh, I won't go through all of these, but, uh, it's worth taking time just to look through and see what exists. And again, if you have add-ons at your company, you will have more or less options in here. Um, there are some that, some that you'll see folks use quite a bit. Here's our two dimensional filter statistics. So I'll just click add to put that on my dashboard. New gadgets always show up in the top left corner. So right now I have two columns. It shows up in the top left by default. And I'll do an assign to me. So one annoyance, you'll notice assign to me showed up on top of the other one, but I can click and drag it around. And now I have to configure them. Every, uh, gadget will have different configuration. For example, assign to me, how many issues and then what do I wanna show? So maybe that looks fine. I can now see all the tickets that are assigned to me. Up, up to the top ten. Other ones, though, require a saved filter. And this is where I have to go in and first save a filter, uh, before I can do it. There are some that come, for example, all resolved issues. Or you can pick a project name. Like everything in the JJ project. Um, but you can also go save a filter of just a specific slice of tickets. For example. Everything created in the past week that breaches SLA or every bug issue, uh, every bug work item, not issue type. Uh, submitted by, you know, with a certain organization on it. So you can get more detailed there. Uh, Susanna, yep, definitely worth limiting dashboard editing. By default, it's just yourself. Um, that could be frustrating, but it's better, it's usually better that no one can go change it than everyone can go change it. And then with this one, I just tinker with the axis. What do I wanna see on the X and the Y? Maybe I'll look for status. Give me your status. And pretty quickly, I have a dashboard I can share with my team. Again, this example may not be the best, but. When I give this to someone, the assign to me will always be whoever's logged in. So my agents could use this to get work done and see where tickets are stuck. Or who's assigned tickets and maybe Rob has too many. Maybe I have to go give some to Susanna. So that's a very quick dashboard. We can also change the layout. Um, we're pretty limited. We can do three columns, two columns or some split of them. And then we just hit done, and there we go. Now we do have some more actions. We can copy them. Uh, and there's a thing called a wallboard. I personally have not used these. Um, this comes out of Agile where you would just have a TV with ma- uh, major statistics up on the wall. A board on the wall. That's the name. Um, but this could be used to just display something in your area. Uh, I again haven't used it, but it's called a wallboard. We can make it a slideshow. So we can say which dashboard, which dashboards should be included. Um, again, I don't think stuff like this would come up too much on the exam, but just be aware you can have them as wallboards. Uh, so you can display information to the team. Um, copy and rename or share. So they're fairly straightforward. There's not too much into them. The frustration is in those gadgets. And trying to find the right gadget and then trying to configure it. Again, I won't dig into the config for each of these, but please reach out if you're struggling with these. Jump on the Atlassian community, ask in our Discord. If you need help figuring out how these things work. Um, I have just figured them out because I beat my head into it quite a bit and eventually. I got the answer, which is not a good way to learn for most people. Um, editing and copying a dashboard, we kinda spoke about this, but you can edit them just by clicking that edit pencil again. Um, fairly straightforward, and then you can copy them. I'll copy them off pretty frequently, mostly cuz I'm just lazy and I don't wanna have to rebuild it all, all over again. Uh, but that's available from the more actions menu up in the top right or the edit pencil. Let me zoom in here for us. Uh, we spoke about gadgets, uh, and we can add them. Again, if you have add-ons, you'll have more or less. Um, that frustrated me when I changed jobs. Uh, we touched on our layout. Again, the one, two or three columns, um, just to change visually what it looks like. Uh, we talked about configuring gadgets. Some of them do have configuration options. Um, a- again, just go and play with some gadgets just so you understand the basics. Uh, but don't stress too much about, oh, I've gotta memorize how it all works. Once you start to get the idea, um, it's a little bit easier. Uh, Sten. Excuse me. Um, this is true for many things, my friend, uh, but I definitely agree with reports. Uh, Sten is saying, once you need the report, you'll understand how limited they are. Um, yeah, and that's where, like, we need to remember Atlassian isn't building a reporting platform. They're building a work management platform that happens to do some reporting. Um, that's not a good answer, but it, it just reminds me that, hey. Like their focus is really on the, the work items, the work management. Um, and as I think it was Justin mentioned, there are add-ons that can help with reporting. Uh, so if your organization really needs something, definitely check out add-ons, but to y'all's point out of the box, you might run into limitations. Um, copying dashboards. We can make a copy. I'll do this sometimes if someone wants to play with the dashboard. Like if someone on my team is learning, I won't give them edit access to the one that we all use. I'll make a copy and say, here, John, go play with this. You can't, you know, if you break it, I'll just give you another one. And that's my own personal, uh, way of using them, the copy. Uh, we spoke about wallboards. Uh, they call them a scoreboard for a sporting event. Um, I don't know if they're that exciting. Uh, but the same idea, as I mentioned, this would be a, a TV up in your team area where everyone can see information about the project. Uh, maybe this is about major incidents. Maybe this is about number of tickets that are outstanding or some other metric or piece of information. Uh, and all it does is it revisi- it, uh, resets the dashboard to look a bit cleaner. So it gets rid of a lot of the menus and just shows the statistics for the team. Um, one call out here, just, this could pop up on the exam. Gadgets rotate or move around when you display as a wallboard. Um, you know, change their colors and ensure gadgets are in the same row, have the same color. That will help the team visually figure out what's going on, but the layout can shift a little. Um, please let me know what questions y'all have. I'm going through this a little bit more quickly. So we can talk about some of the other questions related to studying or how do I approach the exam or my timeline. Uh, but please stop me if you're like, hey, Rob, that doesn't make sense. I wanna dig into this more. Uh, can we change the default to something not private when we create one? I like that question and I don't believe so. Um, I've never seen a, a way for this to be something other than private. Um. To me, it's like the fail safe mode, Susan. It just ensures every time I build one of these things, it's always gonna be. Um, what's it called? Secured or locked down. Um, this is though, something that groups frequently forget about and causes a lot of frustration. Someone on the team will make a dashboard. Share it with their manager and then they look at and go, why can't I see it? Um, so please keep that in mind. If this doesn't show up on the exam, it is just a very good thing to know. Um, configuring data sources. So they're basically talking about filters. And again, filters are searching in Jira. Um, so when someone's, says they're searching for a ticket in Jira, they're really building a filter. Um, I'll use those terms interchangeably. So if you hear me say filter, just think, oh, he's talking about search. And if you hear me say search, oh, he means a filter. Um. Uh, we briefly saw this, but there are some out of the box filters for ex- when you use a gadget, the entire project. Uh, yes, Sten, thank you for reading my mind, my friend. Um, I will get back to this, but. Filters and dashboards have separate view permissions. If you don't share the underlying filter, but you share the dashboard, folks still won't see anything. Very frustrating. Um, and that drives a lot of end users crazy. Because they think they've done everything right by sharing the dashboard and they forgot to share the filter they built. I'll show you all how to avoid this. Yes, the shared dashboard won't show those tickets. So it, it might show. Depending on how the filters are set up, some may work and some may not, or nothing will work. Uh, but a very big source of frustration. Um, gadgets display summaries. Yes, we spoke about that. Uh, we can customize what data feeds them with filters. And this, I think they talk about this later, but it depends on the needs of your team, what you need to do here. Um, depending on the gadget, some will allow you to use a filter to feed them and some will not. Um. In this example here, the activity stream is letting them filter by project and account ID. So in this example, there's a filter directly in the gadget. And huh, this UI looks a bit different. I wonder if this one is newer. Um, one thing that we as admin should know, when you can put a filter in, you get one. So I can't have three filters all feeding one gadget. Um, I would have to go make a brand new filter that included all of the stuff about whatever those filters had. So every gadget that support, not all gadgets support filters. The ones that do only let you do one single filter. Uh, here is an example from our wonderful people. Um, Hema needs to create a filter first. You gotta save it. And so here's their filter. When I see JQL or JQL, I read it left to right like English. Where the project, let me zoom in a bit. Equals web design team and where the sprint is empty and where the story points are empty. So give me every ticket where the project is the web design team and the sprint is blank and there's no story points. This is a good exercise just to learn JQL. Look for JQL statements and see if you can translate them in your head. Uh, Mohammed, yes. Oh. Um, jumping on and adding to what Sten had, correct. Um, you might see the gadget, but you won't see the stuff in it. It'll just be blank. Um. But it looked like your point was correct and the same thing as Sten was saying. Alright, um, so we have to go make and save a filter first. So let's pop over to Jira and just do this together. And if you have Jira open, I recommend you give this a shot. I'm going up to filters and view all issues. And then up in the top right, I'm just clicking on the JQL rocker. So JQL is selected. If you see a bunch of dropdowns, you're on the basic search. So just flip it to JQL. I'm gonna do a slightly different one. I'm gonna look for any ticket that I created. So reporter equals. Robert Heen. Now typically, when I build JQL or JQL, I stop and go, is this correct? And I say, no, 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 maybe I don't want resolved tickets. And the status category does not equal done. Uh, random question here. Uh, what does status category do? And I'm asking because when I learned about this, it was a mind blowing moment. And it saved me a lot of time. So I tell as many people about it, but what does status category do? So here I have a filter. And it's saying, anywhere the reporter is Robert Heen and the status category is not done, show me those tickets. Uh, and then I'll just take a look. These are all for Robert Heen and none of them are in the done status. Awesome. This is fairly simple JQL. Um, there are two statements in here or two arguments, two filters, two columns. Um, this can get a lot longer and a lot more complex. Um, so if you ever find some JQL and you can't figure out what it's doing, you know, reach out to me, jump in that Discord and ask, and folks can help you kinda pull it apart. Many times when we inherit a system, we end up with a lot of stuff we don't understand. Uh, I'll just click on save and I'll give this some name. And as multiple people have pointed out, by default, this is private. So if I, if I save this, only I get to see it. So I'm gonna make sure everyone in my organization can see this filter. And maybe only I can edit it. Depending on the filter, I might restrict it to a project or a group or specific people. Um, but. There's still the project and i- work item levels of security. So if Justin can't see an issue due to, uh, work item, due to work item security, it won't show up in the filter. If Susanna isn't part of a project, they won't see the tickets in that project, even if they have the filter. So another thing to keep in mind is we're admins. There are layers of security to make sure we don't see things we shouldn't see. I've saved my filter and now I see it's a name up at the top. By default, it's starred, which is like bookmarking it. And it shows up under my starred filters. Uh, lets you pick the category, the status. Yes, uh, Justin, there's three status categories. Yes, to do, in progress and done. Yes, uh, Justin, ti- that's actually a list of four. Yes is not a status category. So you're so close, my friend. Um, that is correct. Uh, both of you've got it together. Um, status category, uh, every status in Jira is either to do, it's gray. I'll just quickly go to my workflow. Uh, to do, it's gray. In progress, it's blue or done, it's green. So using status category in JQL will let you say any done status regardless of name. So you don't have to know the name of all the statuses in a project. Um, so I use status category a lot. Does not equal done excludes any ticket in a done state. So just a great trick that when I learned, my, again, my mind just kind of exploded. Um, so that's creating and saving a filter. I can come and edit it later if I need to. Whoopsies. Not what I wanted. I'll have to rerun it before I can save it, though. And so I gave this nice little save filter and I can either save as a copy or save overwrite the current one. So that's making a new filter, a new data source. And then I can take that filter and I can feed it into a gadget. So going back to our training, I can configure the gadget to use the new filter that I made. Now this topic seems to show up in basically every trading I do. Naming conventions are super important. When we look at filters, the only thing we usually see is gonna be the name. So if I go to my filters menu, if these names aren't good and don't make sense, it's really hard to know what Rob's open tickets do. I have to assume it's all the open tickets for someone named Rob. Uh, and I think. Yeah, they really kinda blitzed through JQL in this now, huh? Interesting. Um, personally, you can't learn too much about JQL or JQL. Um, so definitely something to spend time on. Uh, outside of the exam. But we always saw, that was, you all just saw what I saw. There's not too much in here. Um, so just keep in mind that it is an important skill. And I've got that entire Udemy course if you need help on it. Reach out to me, uh, if you need access or something. Um, we mentioned sharing dashboards. Um, users can only see dashboards that are shared with them. And what appears can be different. Um, so the, people have called this out in chat, but keep in mind what you see on the dashboard is at the end of a lot of permission filters. So first you have to ha- uh, you have to have access to the dashboard. If you have access to the dashboard, you have, you have to have access to the filters that feed the dashboard. And if you have access to the filters that feed the dashboard, you have to have access to the work items under that. And if at any point you don't have access, you won't see that in the dashboard. So I don't know if they call this out explicitly, but that can cause a lot of problems. If Susanna's looking at a dashboard and has different access than John. They may come to different conclusions and they may start arguing over which one it is. Um, I assume this is in, uh, reference to the less JQL, Rebecca. Um, and I've heard that they removed a lot of the JQL questions from the exam to focus it more on the configuration and supporting agents. Um, so I kind of agree in that sense. I'm just saying in my own personal experience as an admin, I'm using JQL every single day to help do things. And it's very uncommon I go in and build a workflow. So they're, they're both important. They both impact different things. But for me personally, the, the tool I'm using all the time is JQL. That's my hammer and my screwdriver. Whereas, uh, you know, the miter saw is the workflows useful in some cases, but not an everyday thing. Uh, and that's why I made that Udemy course cuz it was so confusing to me and so confusing to so many people. Um, renaming and sharing dashboards. Okay, we saw this. Uh, this is something I would write down. Um, the person setting up the share must have create shared objects. This is a good example of a permission that has a name that makes a lot of sense. Uh, again, Atlassian will not. Again, Atlassian will not put gotcha questions on the exam. They're not trying to trick us. But we do have to understand how things work and for this particular permission, it's called create shared objects. So if I'm looking at an exam question that says, why can't Rob share a dashboard? And I see create shared objects in there, I'm gonna go, aha, that's a clue. Now I didn't know this before I did this studying that this was required. I've always happened to have it. But this is now on my list of things that I'll add this to our list of flashcards on the site just to make sure we have it. Personally, I'm most concerned about my permissions knowledge and my work, like my schema knowledge going into the exam. So wherever I see this, I'm very careful to write it down. I think so Rebecca, I think in general. I think in general Atlassian is working on making its training and products more approachable. There's a common perception in my mind that many people think of Jira as this complex thing and why does it have to be so hard? Like, why can't I just do the thing? And doing stuff like this, exactly like you've pointed out, focusing the exam more on, we'll call it simpler, less complex, more approachable things is another way to help people get used to and understand the system. And then as they go, they can build on that knowledge. Whereas if they started beating you over the head with JQL or JQL, it might be harder. A global permission that admins sometimes turn off. That's a good question, Susanna, a good, a good point. Many times we will not be the first admin in our organization to set up Jira. We will inherit it. You'll start a new job and hey, you're now the Jira admin. Isn't that wonderful? So you'll end up with a configuration and a setup that you didn't build. And you're gonna have to go in and check things. This will be one of those things to check is create shared objects turned off for people. And so just being aware that it exists is super important. And I'm glad I wasn't the only one who didn't know that it didn't exist. Finding dashboards, we can search for dashboards, just like we can search for many things in Jira. If we go up to dashboards, there's a view all dashboards option. There are not many in this particular instance. But we do have some filters. Who's the owner? What project do they exist in? What group is connected to them? Over time, the list of dashboards just grows and grows and grows. It's really, you know, there's a lot. Sorry, I've got some things popping up here. There we go. I would like to say I take time and delete my old dashboards. That's a lie. I don't know of any way to easily see how often they're being used. But it's probably worth it to go through and start clearing them out as this gets bigger and you can star them. So this is something I show new folks who join, go star your dashboards, go star your filters so you can find them easily. Sharing filters with gadgets. The filters must be shared. I forget who called this one out and jumped all over it. Stan, I think that was you. So remember to share those underlying filters or they can't see, can't see it in the dashboard. Oh man, they mentioned. Sorry. I'm sighing because they bring back JQL to talk about SLAs and there are functions in JQL to help us with SLAs. I do want to talk about my approach to this exam for the next five or six minutes. So I won't get too deep into this. But you can grab tickets that have a certain amount of time left on their SLA clock through JQL. Or you can find all the tickets that have exceeded or breached their SLA. Or that have a paused SLA. Or that have so much time on them. So there are these different functions, these different things in JQL we can use to get specific slices of tickets. This one for me took a while to unpack as well, like the concept of how it works. Definitely worth something to get hands on and to play with, especially if you have an environment that has a lot of tickets. Because these functions are very, very useful in figuring out and identifying and isolating specific groups of tickets. For example, if you want to see all the tickets that have under an hour left on their SLA clock, you can focus your team on that. You can save that as a filter and give that to your agents and say, look at this first, there's only an hour left. Or you can build that into a dashboard and get metrics on it. So these SLA functions are important. I find it interesting that they have exactly a five minute lecture at the end of this on them. Suggesting again, it's not the most important thing. I think what they're trying to tell us here is that JQL can help us isolate and find tickets based on different things. For example, this bit of, whoopsies, this bit of JQL will show all the tickets that are pending approval. And that can be a very useful thing. So when I think of pulling lists of tickets, it's not just the number of tickets were by a status. It could be by any field on the ticket. Again, it's just a big dashboard or a big spreadsheet, I'm sorry. And there'll be a column in that spreadsheet called was this approved? And if you can, you can then filter on that, say yes or no. Or you can have it. Hey, am I the one who needs to approve it? So this is a fun one you can put in and give it to your stakeholders. So when they open it up, they'll see tickets that are pending their own personal approval. So there's other ways you can use JQL to serve up and slice up tickets. Okay, that was reporting in Jira. Do I believe it's all the reporting in Jira? Absolutely not. Is it something that I'm constantly trying to improve and expand on? A hundred percent. For the exam though, about seven percent. So a non a non trivial amount, but not something I need to spend too much time investing in if I feel like there are other areas I need to look at. Okay, so I mentioned that I scheduled my exam, which is terrifying, but also a relief. I personally find that if I don't schedule it, I feel like I have forever and I don't really dig in. So I, I personally need that goal, hey, May 15th, I'm gonna go sit that exam, I have to be ready. That helps me then get serious about studying. In the same way, doing this study session with all of you helped me get serious about studying. So if you're considering taking the exam, I'd recommend go schedule it. We have spent I think two months now and change together studying. You have hopefully spent time studying on your own and reviewing things. So we've got a lot of good knowledge going around. Now look at a calendar and say, hmm, maybe in two months, maybe by July 1st, I'll take the exam. And then choose to either do it in person or it, you know, go to a testing center or at home, but get it on the calendar. For me, that, that commitment helps because I then can look at my calendar and think, how am I gonna study for this thing? And I forget who asked, I'll pick on Susanna because your name is just on the screen. But then I have to figure out, okay, what does that look like? And so here I have a calendar. I'm just gonna go to my month view, excuse me. And then I'll sit down and figure out, okay, when am I gonna study? If I have until May 15th, which is kind of here. What do I spend the next four weeks doing? And this will then give me a plan. I'll sit down and say, okay, today is the 21st. For the rest of this week, I'm gonna focus on the things that confuse me the most. Or the things that I am least comfortable with. I'm gonna focus on schemas. Because I, Rob, am terrified of schemas because I don't know how they work. So I'll go through and I'll go through Atlassian's updated learning. I'll go through and re-watch our sessions. I'll go through and pull out my notebook where I've been writing things down. And just to review, what is that like? And I might even take new notes. So the way my mind works, if I write things down as I'm studying, that helps get it in. So I'll write it down once when I first learn it and then I would make physical flashcards. In this case, I might write it down again. I'll take another set of notes on another piece of paper to help it just get into my mind so I can remember it. So I might spend the whole week doing that. The next week, the week of the 28th. Maybe I'll pick on the next thing that's the next most confusing permissions. I gotta figure out org level permissions because I'm not as comfortable. Because I know in my experience, I haven't been that org admin. So I've had less hands-on experience. So I'll spend the week of the 28th focused on that. The next week, the 5th, I'll pick another topic. And maybe, you know, the 14th, I won't study at all. By the time it's the night, like the night before the exam, I want to make sure I'm rested. I want to practice just being calm. So I'm gonna build my plan out. So by the time I get to the day before the exam, I can take this day off studying. I've done all the hard work by that point. And the next day I get to go into the exam as fresh as possible, as relaxed as prepared. So that's how I approached the calendar. Again, I gave myself about four weeks. But if any of you look at the calendar and you say, you know what, I'm gonna take it by you know, June 30th. I want to do that. You can do the same thing. Take a look at the exam topics. And say, hey, I don't really understand distinguishing users, projects and roles. So dedicate a week to that. Now the new learning also will help with this. If we go back, if we go down on this page actually. Under start prepping for free, where did it go? They had somewhere, a cute little, cute little, wrong word, a nice little, maybe it's in here. Okay, we've been using the foundational knowledge stuff. Under that, there is the prep resources and I'll put this link in the chat. This to me has also been interesting because they call out areas you probably should dig into more. For example, if I go into distinguish users, projects and whatever, it's broken down into sections and then it has exam hints. So this is really what I should focus in on in these areas. I need to know how to find users. And so this is stuff I'll really study and I'll really write down. Because anything in here, the nice people at Atlassian have identified as being super important to the point where they built an entire lecture around it. So this for me is where I would go and I would just go find the things that confuse me the most. Where would it be? Oh, agent facing features. Yep, I'm gonna jump in here. And then I want to go find SLAs confuse me. Or Q configuration. So I'll also spend a lot of time in here focusing on what Atlassian tells me is the important stuff. And I'll add that into my study calendar. I hope that was useful. I'm constantly looking for better ways to study and everyone is different. So if you remember something from, you know, your school days or university that helped you, definitely give that a shot. This is just my approach and it happens to work for me. So I take a calendar and I just go backwards. Hey, I scheduled the exam. I'm forcing myself to do it. But I know that I've already spent several weeks with all of you studying and getting this into my body and I have work experience. So I'm comfortable with JQL and dashboards because I use them a lot. But I'm less comfortable with workflows and with permissions and schemes. So I need to spend more time studying that stuff. You're welcome, Susanna. And as other folks find things that work, I'll encourage you to share them, like let other people know helpful things as well. It sounds kind of silly, but it does help other people. I think I had one more slide. I did. I've got the webpage, I'm updating it. Nobody look, nobody look, nobody look, nobody look. Nobody look, nothing happened, nothing to see here. There we go. Next session is next Monday. I have built out the rest of the study sessions for the 420 and it ends in mid late May. So I've put them in into YouTube and into Ace. I've added them to the playlist. Oh, am I beautiful? I'll have to fix the thumbnails. The final recap is scheduled Stop it. Is scheduled for May 26th. So we've got about a month left of studying for the 420. And again, that's where I need your help figuring out what's next. What are we gonna study next? Chad, I said nothing to see here, my friend. Here is a link to that Udemy course if you want much more in-depth work on JQL. That should help you out. That's also the discount code. Chad uses one week for the first part, next week for the second part. Nice. So that's another way to think about it. Structure your learning around those learning objectives. And focus just on those to help you get them in your brain. Where is, I have this fun new little Stream Deck thing in my doodle. I'm also on LinkedIn. I'm constantly posting tips and tricks. But if there are specific things that we talked about here that you want me to dig into more, I'm happy to do that. I just need to know what specifically would be the most help to you. I'll guess, like I'll go through and do some stuff on JQL, I'll go do some stuff on dashboards, especially the gotchas that folks pointed out about filter permissions. I'll have something on that, but if there are other specific things I can do to help you all learn and prep for this exam or just learn Jira or Confluence or Atlassian stuff, please tell me. That's very, very helpful. And of course, you know, please like and subscribe. That, I feel like I have to say that I'm on YouTube. Otherwise, thank you all for learning with me. I really enjoy these and have a lot of fun. It's one of the reasons I do them. The other is because I want to make sure I learn this stuff. In my experience, I learn it by doing, so I, I miss topics, I miss things because of that. So I will leave you all with the questionnaire to help me figure out which one of these do we do next? Otherwise, I'll be back on Thursday talking about Confluence for marketing and on Friday for the ACA 900, that's Jira's software essentials. Which is more user focused. It won't focus on admin-y stuff. So if you know anyone who uses Jira's software or just general Jira, that is a great starting point and that's a five week arc. We're on week two right now. Otherwise, thank you all for learning with me. We've got another session next week. I think we're talking about configuring for, configuring the customer portal and configuring for ITSM or IT service management. So taking all the concepts we've learned and applying them to a certain way to use Jira. I'll leave the chat open for a bit though. Definitely put any last minute questions. I'll do what I do with martial arts questions, queries, quandaries, conundrums, complaints, confusions, quizzicalities, compliments in there and I'll be happy to respond to them or get to them as soon as I can. And I keep forgetting I have a specific outro video for this lecture. So let me go find that real quick. Spoiler alert, it's very similar. Scott, you're very welcome, my friend. I hope you found it useful. Alright team, and with that, I will see you all next week, maybe sooner.